Good evening. My name is Sarah Carlson and I'm with the League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County. And I'd like to welcome you to the Cologne City Council and Mayor Candidate Forum. Candidate forums such as this are really important. They allow voters, partner organizations, area businesses, and community members the opportunity to engage and hear from the candidates regarding issues that are important to you. We thank both the candidates and the audience for attending tonight and our online audience for viewing. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose a political party or a candidate for office. Our Carver County League has a longstanding history in our community of providing unbiased candidate forums and candidate information that's used by all Minnesota voters regardless of their political beliefs. Sponsorship of this forum is a public service, providing you with an opportunity to hear the candidates. Tonight's co-sponsor is Cologne's Community of Belonging. The views expressed here tonight are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League or our co-sponsor of any particular candidate. League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of this forum. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of the candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political reasons. Sadly, there is never enough time to cover all the issues. If you feel that your questions was not addressed tonight, please contact the candidate directly after the forum. Before we begin our forum tonight, I'd like to take a moment and highlight a constitutional amendment that will appear on our November ballot. Minnesota voters will be asked to either reauthorize or end the constitutional amendment that allocates 40% of our state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Leaving the question blank goes as a no vote. Please be sure to look for the amendment on your ballot and vote as you so desire. And now I'd like to introduce to you our moderator for this evening. Laura Helmer is a certified moderator from the League of Women Voters of Minnesota and is not a voter in the City of Cologne election. Laura?
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome, everyone. All candidates for Cologne City Council and Mayor were invited to participate tonight. The candidates attending are seated in alphabetical order by the office for which they are running. We have Elaine Doobie, candidate for mayor, Matt Leian, candidate for mayor, Jerry Bowers, candidate for city council, Sarah Brus, candidate for city council, and Jason Reed, candidate for city council. Then Selma Olson, candidate for city council in a special election, and Maria Samuelson, candidate for city council special election. You will be given up to one minute tonight to respond to most questions. Depending on the complexity of the question, I may announce more or less time per question. And please note our timekeepers. They have a 30-second and then a 15-second sign. They also have a stop sign. What's going on here? They also have a stop sign or they'll call time to be sure each candidate has the full time allotted. We hope that most, if not all, the questions will be those submitted by the audience. And so if you have a question to submit, please hold your note card high in the air so our ushers will know to collect them from you. We also have some questions that were submitted by email to the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County. No questions were provided to the candidates or anyone else in advance. The only league members reviewing the submitted questions are our two certified question facilitators and me. Now let's begin with our opening statements. And for these statements, you will each have one and a half minutes. And let's begin with candidate Doobie.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I think it's a great opportunity to hear where everybody stands and what our thoughts are on different policies. So my name's Elaine Doobie. I'm a mother of two. I'm a former social worker and I deeply love the community of Cologne. So I'm very excited at this opportunity to become more involved as a mayoral candidate. I have worked very hard in numerous positions throughout my career. I opened a small business earlier this year as well. So I've got a lot of experience and a lot of things that I think could benefit me in this role.
Thank you. Candidate Leian.
Oh, that's fine. My name is Matt Leian. I've been, I moved to the city in 2002. Started on the Planning Commission in 2006. Worked my way up to, this is now my 10th year as mayor of Cologne. Wife and I are very involved in Cologne Glad Days and Christmas in the Park. I work right now at Magnolia, right outside town, driving truck. And I was a maintenance guy 22 years before that. Yeah, I got nothing. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Bowers.
Hi, I'm Jerry Bowers. I have been in Carver County for over 30 years, 30-plus years, and built a house here in Cologne about nine years ago. And love the community and am very active in the community. I do a lot of donation and I give away prom dresses and wedding dresses and do all this fun stuff on the side as well as work to corporate job, which I just recently retired from. So I didn't get noticed for a lot of this stuff because nobody knew my email address. So we're starting kind of fresh, but very active in the community.
Thank you. Candidate Brus.
Hi, I'm, oh, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Brus. Thank you so much, each and every one of you, for coming out tonight. This is very important to get to know your candidates that are running. I am seeking my third term in city council. I have been running, I've been on the council for the last eight years. I have lived in Cologne for 10 and a half years. I have two children, they're 10 and 12. We're very active in the community. I am really just glad to see each and every one of your faces here. And I welcome you to our city council meetings. We host them on the first Monday and the third Monday of each month. So please come because I would love to fill the room every single council meeting to hear your opinions. I am a rules and policy person, so if I don't understand, I will ask a lot of questions. And that is how I've managed my way through the last eight years. My background, I am an HR manager, so I bring that, my work, to council by running the Personnel Committee and really managing people. I got the 30 seconds. It's like the Oscars, you're being called up. Wait for the music. I believe in public safety as the number one and I back our fire department, so.
Candidate Reed.
All right, that's my cue. My name is Jason Reed. I moved to Cologne 17 years ago with my wife and oldest daughter. I grew up in a small town in Minnesota, western Minnesota, so the small-town look and feel really kind of appealed to me. Since then, we've added three more daughters to our family and really called this place our home and our community. I'm running for city council because I want to be able to see the Cologne city grow sustainably. I think there's things that we can do to reinvigorate our downtown, give, it's a little too close, see through some of the infrastructure things that the council already has pushed through and ushered that through with the wastewater treatment plant and provide some more opportunities for outreach within the community, bringing some of those voices from the community back into the city and the council chambers. My experience as a professional strategic manager is to try to set things in place so that we have success at the end, and that's what I think I bring back, bring to this office. Thank you.
Candidate Olson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Selma Olson. I moved to Cologne in 2006. I have four amazing kids and I actually moved to Cologne in 1991, grew up west of here, not actually in town with my family or my mom and dad. Then we moved to Cologne in 2006. And just really love the town, love the community, want to get more involved and give back to the community that I care about and where my family was raised. They're all kind of grown up now, not to say that I have more spare time, but just looking to be involved, to give back to the community, to really just, there's future coming here with growth and, you know, just to be a part of that, help plan that. I've worked for the City of Chaska Public Works Department since 2005. I am now the park foreman and so almost 20 years I've been there, working on any and many different types of park projects, street projects, League of Minnesota Cities, just kind of working with council and managing stuff like that. So thank you.
Candidate Samuelson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. I'm Maria Samuelson and I have been living in Cologne for about 15 years. I married a native of Cologne. We have four kids and six grandchildren. And I was actually brought in earlier this year to replace somebody else. As the mayor called me, I was a frequent flyer to the meetings. I was going to all the meetings to try to learn as much as possible beforehand, still learning. I would like to, I really love Cologne. I love everything about it, the small aspect of Cologne at the same time. I really feel that there's a lot of growth that could be moved forward and on a timeline. And so I'd like to be a part of that and see it grow and help it along. I work for Carver and Scott County. I have worked for them for the last 24 years. So I do have some knowledge of the political part of it as well as the needs of both counties and the cities that go along with it. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, candidates. And now we'll move into our questions. And I know we're asking you to share microphones tonight and don't be shy about pulling that microphone a little closer to you when it's your turn to answer to make sure everyone can hear. The question, the first question will go to candidate Samuelson first. And it is, what are your top three priorities to move Cologne forward?
With the housing that's coming into town, there's a lot of safety issues, I feel, for the kids. A lot of young families are moving in. It's, and then we all have grandchildren or most of us have grandchildren that come into town. So I'd like to see some more safety things happen. I'd also like to bring in some more businesses, even if they're small businesses. We have a beautiful downtown area and those stores, the storefronts, and I know that they paint them and that stuff, but to really get, you know, even just a craft place or something, something in those stores to bring, you know, to catch the eye and bring more people in. Logan's Pass is a prime example. 212 Bar and Grill is great. I'd also like to expand on housing when it comes to apartments or something that's more affordable for the senior citizens that don't want to leave their hometown. Thank you.
Candidate Bowers.
I am looking at the infrastructure and cleanup of our downtown area. We do have an issue that we've been dealing with. I'm also a member of the Planning Commission, or Commission for this last year, so I've been watching this pretty closely. We have a wastewater treatment plant that needs a lot of work, a lot of money involved, and how we can get that accomplished and be able to bring in additional housing, bring in additional apartments, whatever it takes, we need to clean that up. The other thing I'm looking at is the downtown area. You know, we have a lot of storefronts and stuff that all you can see is the boxes inside there. It'd be really nice to be able to clean it up, close up those windows, or reevaluate what's in there and bring different companies into it. I also came from a corporate, sorry. Thank you.
Candidate Doobie.
So similar to Ms. Bowers and Ms. Samuelson, I think continuing the infrastructure work is very important. Cologne is clearly a growing community. A lot of young families want to come here and raise their children here. I am one of those young families. So to continue on that work, also to increase the downtown businesses and to revitalize them, to see what we can do to encourage some of those owners of those buildings to consider selling or renting or other incentives that might be available. Also, I would like to see some more accountability when it comes to our city ordinances. Unfortunately, we kind of have a situation where we're relying on neighbors to kind of turn in neighbors when it comes to ordinances that aren't being followed. So I think to put more structure and accountability in place so that that's done without our neighbors having to kind of keep tabs on each other.
Candidate Olson.
Would you mind repeating the question?
What are your top three priorities to move Cologne forward?
I will follow along with what they're talking with infrastructure, but I will add to it. We're going to have a tremendous amount of growth coming in the next five, 10, 15 years, whatever that looks like. But what are we doing to take care of the stuff we have and the neighborhoods that are existing? And how can we do that with the least amount of stress on the taxpayers' wallet? The second thing would be, I feel our community is semi-divided between the Winkler neighborhood, the Meadow Park, Meadow Street neighborhood, Cross 212 here, and the downtown area. I would like to see how we could bring that together and be a one-town type place. And the third would be, yeah, just housing, working with that infrastructure and the sewer thing seems to be a big issue that's kind of holding us back right now.
Candidate Leian.
Just taking notes. The sewer is number one priority. In order to have any kind of growth in Cologne, we need to have more capacity on our sewer. So that's job one. Senior and new professional housing, we kind of alienate those two crowds of people now, so that's going to be another priority once the, when new housing starts coming in. And the biggest thing is we need to plan responsible growth. We all moved here because Cologne is a small town, we, the small-town feel. I moved here with 1,000 less people and people are still moving to town for the same reason. We want to keep that going forward.
Candidate Brus.
Okay, my three top priorities are safety, continue working with our fire department and our, creating those reports from our sheriff's department to make sure that we're staying as safe as we possibly can. Also, our public works for our speed limit signs. That's just a tiny little part of it. Also, working with our new city administrator, Michelle, on budget planning and being fiscally responsible. So when I think of Cologne, I think of our tax rates as houses. So when we're putting in new parks, how many houses are we accounting for in that budget? So continue working with that. And then, of course, our sewer system. I really want to see that through with the legislator and make sure that we get the right funding that we deserve.
Candidate Reed.
Wastewater treatment plant, I'll just plus-one everybody on that. In addition to that, revitalizing the downtown responsibly, not bringing in like big-box stores. I think there's a lot of people who have a lot of passion as makers within this community and giving them the opportunity and the means to be able to find ways to break open some of those doors and find brick-and-mortar places to sell their fares. And third is just transparency and more openness with what is happening within our city government. So how can we leverage our Facebook platform to broadcast our council meetings, more outreach and give people within the community an opportunity to share the challenges, but also the wins, and bring that back into the city council meetings?
All right. Many of you mentioned infrastructure in your first answers, so I've got a series of specific infrastructure kinds of questions that I'll ask next. And the first one is going to go to candidate Reed. And I know you already mentioned it, but it is, what is your opinion on the current capacity and the future needs for wastewater treatment in Cologne?
More. I think, like I said during my opening, I commend the current city council and the leadership for getting the wheels moving, on getting the right funding and the opportunities to expand what we have right now. We're kind of nearing capacity for growth. So continuing to push that forward and find out what, find what other, what else we can do, any other kind of funding or programs or grants that we can provide to keep the cost to the citizens low.
Candidate Brus.
Well, it's a short answer for me. So we are, we can't grow any further until we have a wastewater sewer treatment plant. So without the funding, we can't grow any further. So it's a pretty short answer for me. That's top priority and it has to be. We have to get the funding and we have to build it so that we can continue to grow. We're on borrowed time for putting it in.
Candidate Leian.
Can you repeat the question again?
What is your opinion on the current capacity and future needs for the wastewater treatments in Cologne?
We are almost out of capacity. The Loomis development on the northwest side is about the last development we can do. No other, nothing else can come in. We have a plan on the table right now for what we consider a minimal, a 10-year growth capacity in the sewer with room to expand. So our $15 million cost now will cost us less in the future to be able to expand, to grow with the city. We need federal or state dollars to help with that. And the state is mandating, the EPA is mandating what, how, what levels we could run the phosphorus at and they keep pinning us harder and harder and harder, which is draining our capacity. So we need state help. Cologne cannot afford to do the sewer on her own. It's just not feasible.
Candidate Doobie.
I think I would echo the same statement. We clearly need to deal with this and it needs to be done sooner than later. I think truthfully, this is something that has obviously been in the works and should have been in the works for a long, long time because Cologne has had steady growth for quite a few years. And it's a shame that we are at almost a critical, if not crisis, capacity with it because one, failure, one, something goes south and it's going to be pretty catastrophic for a lot of our community if there were to be a failure in some capacity.
Candidate Bowers.
Being on the Planning Commission, I can tell you that we have had this on the agenda multiple times and are working with it. And we are very aware that we can't grow anymore until we do something with this. You know, there is some possibilities, as the mayor here has said, where we have like a Band-Aid that is possible to get us by for a few more years until we have the big expense that we have coming up. And we are looking at state funding and getting that in the process as well. There's a lot to do with the different levels and what the EPA and everybody is saying to us. But I can assure you, Planning Commission has been looking at it and the full package of it.
Candidate Samuelson.
Well, I'm really going to have to kind of echo some of what everybody else has said. It has been a long process and it's going to be a long process. I think that there's some things that could have been changed, starting earlier, as Ms. Doobie had said, you know, looking forward. The state never moves fast. I deal with them on a daily basis at my job and trying to get it to push through as fast as we can is difficult on our end. I think that we need to look forward, knowing that this is going to be something that we need to be in the future, five, 10 years down the line, and start something at that point, now. You know, getting it taken care of now, but then from there, moving forward, going, knowing that we're going to have more people moving to Cologne and hopes and buildings and making sure that we go further out than, you know, five years. Thank you.
Candidate Olson.
Again, yeah, to echo what everyone else says, clearly this is what's needed. And how do, how do, how does this group or whatever this group looks like that gets elected put that together? Is that working with Met Council? Is that working with the EPA? Is it working with the state? Not rushing anything, but knowing that the freeway is four-lane to us now and four-laid beyond us, it's certainly going to bring a lot of change in the near future. So how can we be prepared and not let, not let the traffic pass us by, so to speak, and move off to the next town? So I think it's going to be a big group effort with many people involved, not just in this room, but county, statewide, so.
All right, thank you. The next question will come to you first, candidate Olson. What changes, if any, are needed to revitalize Cologne's Main Street?
I think it's been discussed earlier. It's, you know, how can we get business here? And I think that'll help too with the, with the sewer treatment plant being added to, capacity higher, et cetera. Where how can we get businesses in here that are going to bring jobs, for one, and revitalize our downtown, keep people downtown? You know, working in Chaska, that has been something that they've been priding themselves on for decades now, just trying to keep downtown alive. And so I feel my experience in that, kind of working with that downtown projects and construction, I think we can build a local gathering spot in the center of our town.
Candidate Samuelson.
Thank you. I would have to echo some of that, yeah. I think one of the ways that we could start doing it is have pop-up stores. You have pop-ups all over the place and that's one of the things that people like. I mean, they're there and if they, if, you know, they bring in some people from out of town, and then if they find that that's something that they can stay at, then that would be great. We could fill those buildings up. I mean, it's, they're beautiful old buildings and I'd love nothing more than to see them restored and used and occupied by people that like to make homemade things, sell their, their beautiful quilts or whatever, and other businesses as well. Some painting could be done on some of them, the flowers, the boulevard, the whole thing. I mean, during the wintertime, it's gorgeous. They, they put up the lights and it's just, it's beautiful. So I'd like to see more pop-ups maybe, or getting just onesie-tuesies in there to get them started.
Candidate Brus.
We have to work with the current owners of those buildings. You can only do as much as they will allow for. For example, we had a few years, we did put planters outside and then they weren't watered by the owners of those stores. So again, you can try, you can only do as much as you ask of. You can ask for the buy-in and as those buildings become available, make sure that they're safe to, to go into. Some of them aren't. Some buildings have been for sale and it's cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them to a place where they can run a successful business out of. So it's, it's working with the owners and current buyers that are looking.
Candidate Reed.
I think there's a couple of different strategies that we can look at, one of which, like I said before, there's, there's a lot of people in this community who have a passion for making things, but they don't necessarily know how to take it the next step. One of the things I'd like to do is provide some sort of maker's workshops to give those people the opportunity to understand, here are the next steps you need to take to make your dream reality. What are the programs that are available either at the state or federal level to give them the opportunity? And also, what can we do from a city perspective to provide some kind of break for them to get off, get their feet off the ground? Additionally, I think it's just, yeah, that's it.
Candidate Doobie.
I would have to echo what Ms. Brus said, which is getting the current building owners bought into, making improvements to the buildings, opening up, opening them up for businesses to have access to. Unfortunately, a lot of the building owners are not even here, they're not even in this community. There's quite a few that live outside of Cologne, some even that live outside of state. And so they're not regularly checking up on their buildings. and so they're not regularly checking up on their buildings. They're not seeing the problems that are happening, and so they don't really see how detrimental it is to not just the business growth, but the aesthetic of Cologne. When you've got shutters falling off, or windows that are, you know, have burned-on old stickers and clings and things like that, that just, it doesn't look well, and those kinds of things should really be dealt with.
Candidate Bowers.
Those are all great ideas, but just to put everybody on the same wave here, I have a couple of friends that would have loved to have come into some of those storefronts and had pop-up store or an actual store, and nobody would rent to them at all. And we have a lot of buildings down there that are being used as storage, so we really need to enforce our ordinances and see what we are doing with those buildings so that we can clean it up. I helped with the cleanup over in Waconia when I was on their council, and it is not an easy job nor a fun job to deal with the owners, because they've been doing it for so many years. They really believe they have the right and they can do whatever they want with that building. So, great ideas, but we gotta keep turning the wheels and figuring out how to make that all happen.
Candidate Leon.
Yeah, changeover in ownership is really the only way that I can see. We have great examples of new owners taking very much so pride in their new buildings, and there's huge examples in that, and if we can just make that more of a cancer and transfer that to every other building, I mean, we'd have a great downtown. We've tried TIF districts, we've tried tax breaks, we've tried giving money to revitalize buildings, and nobody at the time took advantage of any of it. Oh, I take that back. One business owner did. The, sorry, let's see, doesn't matter. I'll point it out, anybody that wants to know. I just lost the train. Thanks.
Well, you're up first on the next question.
Perfect.
Please share your thoughts on potential retail, commercial, and industrial lots along the US 212 corridor near Cologne.
I've been doing 15 years of thinking on this very question, and it really, I mean, the one chunk of property that everything can be perfect in is right across the street there, and it's not available yet. There, again, we need a change of ownership. And sewer is a big key of that. We can't pursue anything until the sewer is fixed and we have enough capacity to bring all that in. You get pop-up questions here and there, and we just say we're waiting on a sewer. We can't help you right now. We don't have land available for any of that right now, but something will open up in the near future, and we'll jump on it as quick as we can. We do have ideas around, and our ears are always open, so.
Candidate Bowers.
I agree with what Matt's saying, again, being part of the planning commission. I have to tell you, this comes up all the time with us. We've seen plots, we've looked at all the different options that we have, but we have no way to do it. If we don't have wastewater space for them, we can't put in anything. We can't put in any kind of industrial, we can't put in any retail, we can't do any housing. We are locked, and that's something that we have to look at. But we are working on a future plan and what that's going to look like. So, our committee is working on it, and hopefully we'll have some things that we can talk to the community about soon as we can figure out how to get wastewater taken care of.
Candidate Reed.
The first step is given us the capacity to be able to expand, and expand reasonably. Until that, I'll echo what the previous one said, like, until that is in place, I don't, we can talk until we can plan.
Candidate Olson.
I will agree and disagree, so to speak, with kind of the beginning. Just, we gotta keep the conversation going, whether it's through planning commission, whether it's through the county, whether it's through reaching out. I don't exactly know what that looks like, but to keep the conversation going so that when the wastewater that we're all hoping comes, we are ready, and we're not then working to catch up again because of the lack of wastewater. So, if we can, you know, focus on downtown for now, bring in businesses there, you know, what are our options? Really just looking at what are our options until we're ready for some bigger growth.
Candidate Samuelson.
I would have to agree with my opponent here. Again, it's looking for the future. You want to make sure that you're always looking to the future, but again, it's, at the same time, I'm on the committee and I'm our council person, and we can't do anything until we have the wastewater plant intact and going. But in the meantime, you can still have those conversations, we can still talk about it. I mean, there's always ideas, like Matt had said, across the street over here, right back out here, when the land is available, but keep the lines of communication open, and until that wastewater plant is done, hands are tied.
Candidate Doobie.
I would agree with the same thought that pretty much everybody else has had, so clearly we're all on the same page when it comes to just the fact that we don't currently have the capacity, but I will also very strongly agree with the fact that the four lanes of highway coming into Cologne and soon to be going past Cologne, if we can't be continuing conversations, growing the potential, we're gonna be missing out on a lot of opportunities for businesses, which is not just great for those of us that live here, but that brings jobs to the community as well, and jobs are something that any community can always use more of.
Candidate Brass.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Please share your thoughts on potential retail, commercial, and industrial lots along the US 212 corridor near Cologne.
Perfect, so near Cologne. So, we have two things that everyone's already said, so sewer and land available, but yeah, I think we welcome anyone to come with ideas, to planning commission, to council members, email your city. If you have an idea that you want to open a business, of course, we want to hear about it. I don't think anyone's sitting here with a desire to not grow. We want to see the city succeed, so I think that's the number one in all of our answers.
Thanks. The next question will come to candidate Brass first, and it's a two-part question in the parks and recreation area. So, the first part is about parks and green spaces, and then I'll follow up with a second question about trails. The first question then, as you look to the future, how important are parks and green spaces as well as open space for Cologne? And how would you make decisions about those spaces?
Yeah, that's perfect. I love this question. So, we can only do with what we have within our budget, and we have had planning meetings in the past to set aside budget for parks and open spaces. We have to look at our community as a whole, and we have to look at ages zero to our senior citizens, and that is something that is very much going on in our city council currently, is to build out parks for the aging community and then for our very young community. Working with our preschool teachers that are planning for parks that are near their preschool are very important, and I think that we have to keep daycares in mind, our local businesses. I ran a daycare in Cologne for quite a number of years, and so just keeping those ages in mind, and the budget.
Candidate Doobie.
Could you repeat the question, please?
As you look to the future, how important are parks and green spaces as well as open space for Cologne? And how would you make decisions about those spaces?
So, parks and green spaces, open spaces are incredibly important to Cologne because they're used by all ages. So, I would also agree with what Ms. Brass said, just as far as budgeting and making sure that the finances are being directed to maintain those parks and green spaces, being accessible to those that are going to utilize them. We have some very beautiful parks already that are very well-maintained. I think our public works department does a fantastic job of that, and so I think just to keep maintaining these facilities so that they remain easily accessible to those that want to use them.
Candidate Samuelson.
I would agree. The parks that we have now are beautiful, and they do a great job of keeping them up. I like to see, I see every day how many people use the walking trail around the lake. I would love to see that expand one day when we have the funds to do that, but get more walking trails out there. The trails that we have are great. I'd like to see if we can go a little bit more to the east. And the parks that we have are kept really nice, and I think that having those are really important. We're gonna be hopefully getting one over by, well, we have one over there, but another one added over in the new addition of Loomis, I think, some field or something or another, but I'd like to see more of that and maintain what we already have.
Candidate Reed.
I'll echo a lot of what's already been said. I think having those gatherings places within the community are critical and important, and I think there's probably some opportunities to use more of the green spaces. I know we've used the green space back here for the firemen's drive-through, drive-ins in the past. There's a huge green wide-open space over in the Meadow Street area that I think could be utilized as well. I'm a frequenter of the walking paths, so any opportunity to expand that, to get outside a little bit of the city would be great.
Candidate Olson.
Yeah, so in my background, this is right up my wheelhouse, working for parks for 20 years, so parks are huge to the community, and I would love to see a capital improvement program to not just plan for future parks, but how do we take care of the parks and green spaces we have, the trails we have? Connect people. Back to my statement about connecting the neighborhoods in different sections of town, how can we do it? How can we do it budget-wise? How can we do it safety-wise with state highway crossings, et cetera? But just planning ahead, working with the planning commission, working with public work staff, they're obviously going to be the caretakers of that, so how do, what's their input? And making sure that the questions are asked of them, what they need and what they see as a need for maintaining and keeping up all of the spaces we have, plus the new ones.
Candidate Leon.
Parks and trails are a requirement for any new development rolling through town, so they propose a plan, we approve it, and go from there. Any future expansion of current parks, we're running as tight a ship as we can, so we'd have to add more staff. We have expansion of Winkler Park available, we have an expansion of Blue Park down here, which is a ton of land, so we could add more green space tomorrow if we needed to, but right now the demand isn't there. We have community ed coming into Meadow Park and the Blue Park. Lacrosse is coming into town, which is exciting to see. T-ball and baseball up in the Meadow. There hasn't been a demand for it to open up Winkler yet, so we'll hold out as long as we can, but we'd have to add another person for staff to maintain more of what we have.
Candidate Bowers.
Love this question, because we have done a lot this last year. You know, we have basketball courts back here, they're talking about having soccer practices back here, we're talking about pickleball courts for, you know, different ages, and we have a new dog park. So, there's a lot going on with the green space and the parks that we have. My husband worked for the city of Cologne for a while doing the parks, and that was one thing he was very proud of, is how all of the maintenance happened for both the trails and for, I mean, anytime there was any strong winds, they were out there trying to find the twigs and the leaves and, you know, whatever to keep it cleaned up. So, we're really proud of what has happened here in Cologne and where it's moving.
Thanks. And the follow-up parks and rec question on trails comes to you first, candidate Bowers, and it's what is your plan for Cologne's walking and biking trails, and especially those segments of trail that have remained unfinished for many years?
Well, as Matt had said here earlier, you know, part of it too is how much can we maintain with the staff that is with Cologne right now, and the expense of that, as well as actually putting those trails in. Still takes blacktop, it still takes cutting down those trees and moving them, and some of that is stuff that is being looked at. And again, as we look with the planning commission, not only for what is happening with the Main Street and with our city and with the houses, we have to look at all that and how it all fits together.
Candidate Reed.
So, I learned something, just, and thank you, Matt, of just the, any kind of expansion, meaning that it's additional, it means an additional person that we would have to add, and I think that's something that definitely has to be taken into consideration. Yeah, I think it's, I'm a value guy, wherever the value makes the most sense, and looking at the numbers to figure out where's the right spend of money.
Candidate Olson.
Just planning on how, I'm sure staff right now that's working on the councils, sounds like they're doing a great job, I'm not trying to knock anyone's job, but just keep the conversation open to continue these trails, to, you know, have the conversations about when is the next maintenance staff coming onboard, to help grow and help maintain trails in this kind of green space, public space. You know, you look at, how can it lead us to this section, that section of town, where the need is, where the most traffic would be? And just, like Jason said, where's the most value?
Candidate Samuelson.
I would have to echo what my opponent was saying. The trails that we do have right now, they are, some of them are in good shape, some are a little rough, but the maintenance guys around town do an excellent job of maintaining what they can and with what they have. So, maintaining it and then looking forward to more of, you know, more trails elsewhere or adding on to them, but right now it's about the maintaining it, I think, and hopefully in the far, in the near future, we can add more.
Candidate Doobie.
So, again, to echo clearly, the trails we have are wonderful, I've bet on many of them. Budgets can get tight, and I think our public works department does a fantastic job with what they can do. I think if there were to be a call for expanding trails or improving trails, I think that's a great opportunity for community engagement. I think as we talk wanting to build community across 212, I think there's great opportunity for rallying the community to get together and to work on those trail improvements so that everybody is bought into this community regardless of what side of town they live in.
Candidate Brass.
Yeah, so the expansion of trails, we can only do, again, with what we have given. We, a few years ago, bid on a property so that we could expand the trail around the lake, that is the big dream, that you could have a walking trail all the way around. Unfortunately, we lost out on the bid, and again, we don't own the rights to that property. So, as those opportunities come up, we purchase them and make that decision as council and expand on our already trails. Something else that we can do, and that I have been doing for the past eight years, and I hope to continue to do so, is every time we have a local representative for state or county that comes in, that we tell them that this is a need on 284. We have to make that road safer, we need a bike trail, would be a great dream, but we have to work together with our local representatives, and I hope to continue to do so.
Candidate Leon.
The only trail that's really lacking maintenance right now is the one down here, south of the highway at Hunts Hagen Development. There's a plan to fix that with Village Parkway once that gets done. We're trying to make that non-assessed, so we're working on trying to get state funds to help with that road, so we can, assessing that road would be a nightmare. So, we want to do it with state dollars, or mostly state dollars if we can. Expanding the trail around the lake on the west side, past the dog park and up, there's a connection already thought of back in 2004, or whatever it is, up in Winkler, there's a connection ready for that trail. We just need a plan and a way to get there. Most of it's over swampland, so it's gonna have to be up on piers. Connection from downtown to basically this end, because there isn't a clear trail from Meadow Street and Winkler to get to even the ballpark. So, if we had a connection from downtown, oh, sorry. Wow, that's a first. Train didn't stop there.
All right, now we'll move to a question on budget and finance, and All right, now we'll move to a question on budget and finance, and candidate Reed, we'll come to you first. What do you believe are the best methods for funding city operations in Cologne?
So I think it's the income, the revenue that we get from the residents, it's revenue that we get from businesses that we get within the city. So opportunities to expand both of those gives, means us opportunities to expand those revenues.
Candidate Brass.
Yeah, so continue with planning, having those planning meetings and working with our city administrator, Michelle, and making sure that we have a plan and that we have an emergency budget for exactly that, for emergencies. Yeah, that's my plan, fiscally responsible. I do consider every single household here as part of that budget, and I think of that every time I make a decision, that's a financial decision.
Candidate Leon.
What was that question?
What do you believe are the best methods for funding city operations in Cologne?
Best methods? One more time? Doesn't make much sense in my head right now.
What do you believe are the best methods for funding city operations in Cologne?
Well, I mean, all we have is taxpayer dollars, and that's provided by most everyone in this room to fund anything in Cologne. We do have some state aid that comes in, it'd be nice if that were up to a little bit more, but, and we do get some money from the townships to help with the fire department budget. I guess I'm not, not understanding it a whole lot, so, sorry.
Candidate Doobie.
Tax revenue clearly is very important, and I think with that just comes the motivation for increasing businesses in the area so that we have a bigger revenue pool to draw from, as well as increasing, again, our wastewater management, so that we can increase our residential capacity, because more people moving to Cologne also means more tax revenue. And unfortunately, tax revenue is going to be one of your best methods for having a fiscally sound, healthy budget.
Candidate Bowers.
Coming to the meetings, city council meetings, and looking at the paperwork, thank you, you do a great job with it, we see where the money's actually coming from and where the budget's at. So we know what's coming in from the taxpayers, from state, they keep applying for grants and revenue coming in from that. I mean, this city is doing an excellent job in trying to pull from all the different sources they can. Until we're able to build more, we can't do much more, so. But Michelle does a great job showing it, and anybody can see that that is here in the city.
Candidate Samuelson.
I guess I would have to echo what this lady, Matt, had said. A lot of it comes from the citizens of Cologne already with taxes. I think that there are some, and Michelle, you do do a great job on that. I think there are, you know, some things that, we rent out the community center and you get the, you know, some of that revenue there, the park or whatever, but it's going to depend on how many people we can get into Cologne and the businesses that is going to help boost that revenue in the long run.
Candidate Olson.
I guess just being fiscally responsible, you know, just, this is taxpayer dollars that the council is put in charge of, so to speak, to decide what is a need and what is a want, and how do you, how do you delegate that? How do you communicate back to the citizens on, you know, what is the biggest need? What is the most important thing to the most number of people, so that we're giving our value back to our residents? And, yeah, just being financially responsible. And, you know, it sounds like they're very transparent now, Michelle, it sounds like does a great job, so just continuing on, growing from that, building on that.
The next question comes to candidate Olson first. As a city leader, how would you engage community members to shape the city's vision and mission?
Just make myself available, to be out in amongst people in, you know, different events. Cologne Hollander's Games are a big town draw, you know, be available, be there, you know, whether it's email, text, whatever it is. But to be out in the community, I think I'm active now out and about, just listening to what people have to say and trying to make sure I understand, ask questions, so that I'm able to bring back to council what people are bringing to me, and to get their voices heard and to be responsible for them.
Candidate Samuelson.
Being out in the public is one of them, but back when the park that was, I can't, it's over in the new area by Loomis, and that park had not been up, and at first I thought I had heard that they were going to, you know, get the stuff together and then the community would come and build it. We are here to help represent the people of Cologne, but you are Cologne. Everybody in here and that's out there that couldn't make it tonight is Cologne. I'd like to be able to find a way to be out there and get them engaged in it, you know? If you want something, then help us get it, you know, be a part of it, be the solution, not a problem.
Candidate Brass.
Can you repeat the question, just one more time?
As a city leader, how would you engage community members to shape the city's vision and mission?
Perfect. So I think I've had a lot of learning in the last eight years, and that Facebook and social media is a great tool for a lot of citizens to express their concerns. I have learned in the last eight years that I cannot respond to them because I speak on behalf of the council and I'm only one-fifth member. That has been honestly the biggest challenge of my role, is to keep my mouth quiet on things that I may or may not disagree with. And so I encourage everyone to come to city council meetings and ask your questions, and this is where I can, my voice can be heard.
Candidate Reed.
So I think two things, one of which is being available, but being available explicitly, not just kind of walk, go on to the different events, but saying that I'm available for, I don't know, coffee with a council member, right? Giving some support to one of our local businesses. So if it's a Saturday once a month at Logan Pass, be available and broadcast that out to the community. Holding office hours within our city hall, similar situation, where people can come if you have a question, if you have a concern, if you have a win, and bring that back into the council, along with boosting up any kind of notifications, any kind of broadcasts that we can do with our Facebook platform.
Candidate Doobie.
I would echo a lot of what Mr. Reed just said. I think being available, having designated office hours that are widely publicized so that people know that you're available, encouraging council meeting attendance, and then also community-sponsored events. I think it's fantastic that we have the communities of belonging that has a basic welcome package when you are a new resident to Cologne, but I would love to see additional events hosted right here in our beautiful community center, even to encourage maybe family events or moms groups, and then especially senior citizen events, just to not only engage our community, but get them out and out and about and reconnected.
Candidate Bowers.
I'm out and about all the time, and a lot of people in Cologne know who I am. I go to most, everything that is offered to me, with GLAD Days and chipping in, or with Lions Club, or with, you know, baseball games, or, you know, helping somebody clean their yard. I'm fortunate, and not fortunate, I'm a widow and single and able to come and go as I please, you know, during the day, and people know where to find me. So I do listen to a lot of it, and I have no problem bringing it to the council. I attend, I believe, every council meeting unless something major has happened on the first and third Monday, and very apt to ask questions, even though I'm not on the council yet. So, you know, I just feel that you got to be out there and you have to be approachable. And I'm not shy.
Candidate Leon.
Network, network, network. You can't get out enough. I attend all the, all the big city events that I can get to, the Bingos, the GLAD Days, the, you name it, I'm there, I'm always out. I've tried office hours in the past, they didn't work for me. People would much rather send an email, or they, as soon as they see me, they remember what they're asking. I've, I talk to people and I bring their problems to the council if they don't want to come to the council meeting. I don't even need to agree with it, I would still bring it to the council. People need their, we need to hear what is being said. If, I mean, I encourage, I know most people on this side, but I encourage anybody on that side, email me. Let me know when you see me out, ask me a question, approach me. I'll answer any question. I stumble a lot here because I'm not great in this kind of setting, but one-on-one, I'm, I'll talk your, hold up the, there you go, thanks.
Candidate Brass, next question to you first. City council and mayoral races are nonpartisan. Everyone comes to their role with a different perspective and different ideas and priorities. How will you work with and come to consensus with other council members and the mayor?
Ooh, I like this question a lot. So when I ran for city council the first time, eight years ago, I wanted a dog park and I wanted chickens in Cologne. We're a farm community, and I believe everyone should have the right to have a chicken in their backyard. I got both in the last few years, so I have no agenda. My agenda is to listen to everyone and be open-minded. I've definitely voted on things that I didn't think I would vote on. They align with my values, but maybe not my beliefs. So be open-minded and ask questions and listen to people's wants and needs and desires.
Candidate Doobie.
Could you repeat the question, please?
City council and mayoral races are nonpartisan. Everyone comes to their role with a different perspective and different ideas and priorities. How will you work with and come to consensus with other council members and the mayor?
I think it's been wonderful to hear everybody's opinions tonight because a lot of us seem to be kind of on the same page as far as goals, but that's not always going to be the case. So I think it's always important to remember what motivates us, why we want to do this, and ultimately what the end goal should be. In my professional career, I was a social worker for a very long time. I'm very used to having to kind of mediate, negotiate, sometimes very emotionally charged concepts, and so I think just remembering that we're all on the same team, even though it might not always seem like that at the same time. And so just to have patience and understanding. But again, I think it's fantastic hearing everybody talk tonight that we all seem to be on Team Cologne, which is the team we should be on.
Candidate Samuelson.
I would happen to agree with what the two ladies before me said. Coming into this, when I first was voted in, I was like, well, okay, here we go. And it is about listening. Not just listening, but hearing what other people are asking, hearing what their needs are, and putting whatever our personal needs are completely aside. We're humans, so sometimes that's not easy, but we try. And then have that conversation. I can't tell you how many times I've talked Matt's ears off or Sarah's and asked questions time and time again until I could come up with a solution that I felt comfortable with and saying yes to. And so far, it's worked.
Candidate Reed.
So working at a software startup, that is my job. There's a lot of different opinions, a lot of different ideas, a lot of different topics that come up, and it's about finding ways to meet in the middle and find collaboration opportunities, so that when you're looking at the data, when you're looking at the facts, and also hearing the voices of the people who, the stakeholders that it's affecting, coming up with the best solution that you have at that moment. So there's times where I may not necessarily always agree with the decisions, but I'm always bought in, because that's what it is, that as a group, there's the decision that's been made.
Candidate Olson.
I think at the end of the day, really, it's, we're representatives of the town, so our own personal agendas, our personal opinions, not that they don't matter, but they have to be put aside. And, you know, working as a team is an easy thing, most of the time, there's always going to be disagreements, right? But just being open to different perspectives, understanding where people are coming from. I'm fortunate to work with a bunch of different groups where I'm at now, where they all have different wants, needs, and desires for, you know, this park or that park or whatever. So trying to find that common ground and just build on that.
Candidate Leon.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure can.
City council and mayoral races are nonpartisan. Everyone comes to their role with a different perspective and different ideas and priorities. How will you work with and come to consensus with other council members and the mayor?
We've been very lucky as a city in the past. Nobody's come in with some crazy off-the-wall ideas, everybody's pretty much been on the same page. With the chicken deal, I came around finally. Took me ten years, but we got there. I mean, the question that always needs to be asked before you make the ultimate vote is what is best for the City of Cologne? It's not what is the best for Matt, it's not what is the best for Jerry, it's what is best for the city. Who, why would someone in Winkler care what we do in Meadow? Why would someone in Meadow care what we do in Honshagen? They don't. But we need to offset, will it benefit enough people in that area to be able to do that? Oh, the train already stopped, hold up the other one.
All right, we have time for one last question, and it's not anything that we've talked about already tonight. The category is elections, and it is coming to candidate Samuelson first. And would you support ranked choice voting for the City of Cologne? Why or why not?
Repeat that again, please.
Would you support ranked choice voting for the City of Cologne? Why or why not?
You know, that's a good question. I guess I've never really thought about it, so I, I don't know that I really have a good answer for that, because it's not something I've entertained, I don't, it's not my way of thinking.
All right, candidate Bowers.
I've been an election judge for 40 years, yes, 40, and I don't really like the ranked voting. I've seen it as a challenge and other, I'm not an election judge here. I haven't been one in Cologne. Because I've done it for so many years, they send me all over the place. I've been in Shakopee, Minneapolis, Waconia, Chaska, Cologne, I mean, they moved me all over the place. I, I just don't like the ranked voting. It just looks like it's kind of messy.
Candidate Doobie.
I would have to agree. I would not be a fan of changing to the ranked voting. I think the system we have is a good system as is. I think it's a lot more clean, in a sense, like Ms. Bauer was saying, it's a little bit easier, and I think also for those voters coming in that aren't familiar with the ranked voting, it could get very confusing for them, possibly leading to them feeling like their vote didn't actually count.
Candidate Olson.
I'm going to be honest, I'm going to have to ask the question, what is ranked choice voting, before I can answer? I really don't know.
Really?
Yeah.
So I'm just in the business of reading the question?
Okay, so, so in that regard, I guess the way we vote now, I have no issues or complaints at the way it's handled right now, and I would stay status quo.
Candidate Leon.
I'm with Silver, I don't even know what ranked choice voting is, and we have a system in place now that's working very well, and why change it? Something most of us here haven't even heard of. You can explain it after, after this.
Okay, I'll explain afterwards, guys.
Candidate Bress.
Yeah, I don't know if I know enough about it to form an opinion, especially in public. I have a lot of questions that I would like answered, so I will definitely be asking after. What I do know is that everyone has exercised your right to vote, so voting is important.
And candidate Reed.
I too don't know enough about ranked choice voting to have an answer, I apologize.
And I will add that it wasn't meant to be a trick question, there's someone that handed in a card that was really curious about how candidates felt about that, so thanks everyone for doing your best for answering.
I'll explain afterwards.
All right, it is time for closing statements, and we, you will have a minute, up to a minute and a half for your closing remarks, and we'll begin with candidate Leon.
Start with me, and it's a minute and a half now. Train's going to stop well below that. Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. As much as I don't like doing this, I believe it's a huge benefit of Cologne to be able to do this, and for you guys to advertise it on the internet, I think is a great thing. I've been striving to get a public forum in here for the last, I don't even know how many years, a lot of years. I was a part of one that I hated probably twelve years ago, and it, I, I do believe it's a good thing, and I do suffer through it, and I, I, yeah, I, perfect. No more train. All right, thank you.
Candidate Wilson.
I'd just like to start by saying thank you everyone for coming out and meeting us all, and thanks for the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I was nervous, I am still nervous as I finish up here, not a very active public speaker, so thank you for your patience and all that. But yeah, I just feel like I have a lot of value with my experience and my work experience, my raising kids experience, you know, kind of my own little circus, I'd like to carry that out into Cologne and, and just be a representative for our town. Just a great place to live, and I, I would love to be a representative of it, so thank you.
Candidate Bress.
So thank you so much for hosting, thank you for everyone that came out. Again, exercise your right to vote in November. I am seeking my third term. I am excited to be a voice for every single person in this room, and I hope to continue following rules and policy and digging in and learning more. The first four years, I really learned a lot. The second term, I started digging in and asking so many questions. My third term, I just really hope to put all of that to really good use. We're at a crucial time in our, in our council, we're working on a lot of things that are pending, budgeting, and financial decisions from state, and I hope to continue that work. We could have a complete turnover almost of our council, and I don't know if that's in a really good position to be in, so I hope to continue working and continue the work that I have been doing.
Candidate Samuelson.
I would like to thank everybody for coming and your questions, and thank you for putting this on. I have, I came in halfway, and I'm learning a lot, and I really would like to continue helping the city of Cologne. Like Sarah said, we're kind of in the middle of things, and I'd like to be able to see it through and push for more things to happen in the city of Cologne. Thank you.
Candidate Reed.
Again, thank you everybody for coming out, thank you for everybody who's looking and watching this, or watching this later, and the League of Women Voters for putting this on, very much appreciated. Yeah, I, I, I think we've heard a lot of things, and I'll echo what Ms. Doobie said, like, the benefit is for everybody because there's a lot of things that we all have agreed on. So I think it's really coming down to making the right decisions and moving forward in a strategic fashion that's reasonable and responsible and sustainable for Cologne, making sure that the, that we're four steps ahead from where we are, and that's something that I think that I bring to the table from a professional standpoint, that I said, that is what I do. And I want to be able to have a part in moving the community forward in a reasonable, sustainable way. Thank you.
Candidate Doobie.
Again, just like everybody said, thank you everybody so much for coming out tonight, for being here, and then obviously everybody that takes the time to actually watch this forum online. I think, like Ms. Bress said, get out and vote, that's such an important thing to do, exercise your right to vote, and I think regardless, just hearing what everybody says, this is a wonderful community, it's a great community to be a part of, and I see it going in a really great direction. This is a community that I'm very thankful and blessed to call home, and that I'm incredibly fortunate to raise my own family in, so thank you.
Candidate Bowers.
As everybody said, thanks for coming, but I also want to thank all these candidates because this is quite a turnout for voting here in Cologne, and it's really good to see this many people that care about this town and what's going on with it. I started out small because I wanted, when I first moved in, I started doing stuff with my HOA, trying to see the lay of the land. Then I started being the frequent flyer that was here every council meeting, so that I knew what was going on and what the ropes were here in the town. From there, I joined the Planning Commission and have learned tons about what's going on and what can and can't be done here, and now I'm running for city council because that's the next step for me and what I can do for the community. I love my neighbors. I love this town, and how welcoming they were. I mean, when I lived in Waconia, I got news for you, they weren't this nice to me. They always said, oh, you came from Chaska? You know, we're here in Cologne, they were very welcoming. So I tried to do it in order, I really tried to get the knowledge and the information, and when I come to a meeting, I do the research for it. Thank you.
I would like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any candidate by League of Women Voters, Eastern Carver County, or Cologne Communities of Belonging. And now for some closing remarks, here is League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County member, Sarah Carlson.
League of Women Voters of Eastern Carver County and the Cologne Communities of Belonging would like to thank you all for being here tonight, and our online audience for viewing. To each of you, we would really especially like to thank our candidates for being part of the democratic process, for running for office, for being willing to serve this community. And finally, we thank the city of Cologne, our facility hosts, and our members here for volunteering tonight. And on a personal note, I just want to say thank you for being here. This is the first time that Eastern Carver County League of Women Voters was invited to come and participate in, and hosting a forum for you all, and I'm just thrilled that we are able to do that tonight for you. The League studies important issues, important to our members and to the health of our community. If you're interested in finding out more about what we do and how you can make a difference, we have a membership brochure available on the table outside this room. Membership is open to all people, sixteen years and older. Individual, household, and student memberships are available. You can find out more information about these candidates and about voting information at mnvotes.gov or vote411.org. This forum has been recorded, and the link will be available on the League of Women Voters Eastern Carver County Facebook page, probably tomorrow. Early voting, as you know, has already begun. Carver County residents can vote in person at the Carver County Government Center in Chaska. Election Day is November 5th, and the polls close at 8:00 PM on that day. Good night, thank you all for coming, and see you on November 5th.